And well, the commissioners introduce themselves, starting on my right.
Ryan Condon, alternate.
Kenneth Wilk, alternate.
Jonathan Formicella, alternate.
Liam Brosie, commissioner.
William Porter, chairman.
Bruno Maeney, commissioner.
Will Gresta, planner.
Scott Schatzlein, the news group director.
Rebecca Wood, recording secretary.
And commissioners, Lisi and Michael O'Reilly are excused for this evening. We will be seating Ken Wilk and Ryan Condon for tonight's meeting. Item number three, organizational items, we have none. Item four, general public participation. Is there anyone who would like to address the commission on an issue that's not related to a public hearing? Seeing none, we'll move on. General appointments, we have none. Public hearings. First up, Planning and Zoning Commission, Monroe, Connecticut, notice of public hearing to be held March 1st, 2018. In accordance with Connecticut general statutes eight dash seven D, a public hearing will be held in the Town Hall Council Chamber, 7 Fanhill Road, Monroe, Connecticut, on Thursday, March 1st, 2018, at 7:00 PM or soon thereafter concerning the following. RAA 2018 dash oh one, file number nine nine six E, access driveways. Proposed zoning text amendment to section three point five point ten D, nine B, to allow an individual unit driveway to intersect directly with a public highway, provided said dwelling was constructed prior to 1960. Petitioner Priscilla and Ken Twombly. Will, what do we have for exhibits?
Exhibit one, regulation amendment petition application narrative. Exhibit two, fire marshal comments. Exhibit three, building official comments. Exhibit four, town engineer comments. Exhibit five, police chief comments. And exhibit six, the applicant re-submissioned petition materials before the commission's grasp. That is all.
Okay, for the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name's David Bjorkland. I'm president of the firm, Spaff Bjorkland Associates. We have offices here in Monroe, and I'm a professional rent engineer registered in the state of Connecticut. And this evening on this application, I'm representing Priscilla and Ken Twombly. This is a proposal for a very simple text amendment in order to change a requirement of driveway access. And just to give some of the commission members who work here some of the background on this, this was prompted by the adoption of the ARR district on Cutler's Farm Road and the Purdy Hill Road and the creation of Burr Corner, which is an active adult community, which was approved back in 2017. And what the former regulation indicated, when it was adopted by the commission, that all of the dwelling units within the development had to have access to the private road, which is to be constructed within the community. And they couldn't have access to a public road. And the site plan that was created was able to achieve that for all of the new units. They all have access to a private road, which then exits out onto Cutler's Farm Road. And the, what resulted is there was one remaining dwelling at 269 Purdy Hill Road, which had been built in 1957, which couldn't comply with that regulation. It wasn't practical to comply with the regulation. And so through discussions during the public hearing process, the commission and the applicant both expressed an interest in being able to keep 269 Purdy Hill Road as a pre-existing dwelling within the community. And the only way that this could be accomplished was through this text amendment. So what we're looking at this evening is just a simple addition to the existing regulation. The existing regulation says, "All individual unit driveways shall intersect only with an internal access driveway. No individual unit driveway shall intersect directly with a public highway." That's the existing regulation. And what we're proposing this evening to add is just unless the unit was constructed prior to 1960 and has a driveway that intersects with a public highway and is a single-family residence. The, so the, to give you a little bit more background on the, this district, you need 10 acres to create this district. So there's a likely chance that what, just what happened on this piece of property and what could happen in the future when the commission is presented with other ARR districts is on a 10-acre parcel, there's a good chance there's an old home on the parcel that we wouldn't, probably wouldn't want to tear down as part of the development plan, but couldn't be incorporated into the development. And so if that house was built, constructed prior to 1960, they would be able to continue to use the existing driveway that they've always used to get out to a public highway. And in this, of course, this regulation will be universal and will apply to any future applications for a change zone to the ARR. But it was driven by this one particular case on Purdy Hill Road where both the applicant and the commission didn't want to see a perfectly good house torn down because we couldn't tie the driveway in that unit into the proposed development. There was one, one comment that was made by Scott Schatzlein, and Scott's recommendation was that we add language that this be, comply with the current town ordinance regarding driveways. And I did not choose to incorporate that into the language for the, the simple reason the chances that a house that was built before 1960 is going to comply with the driveway ordinance, which was probably written five years ago, is going to be achievable. It could be in question. So I did not, consulting with my client, we did not incorporate that language into it simply because it might eliminate the utilization of this text amendment in the That concludes my presentation. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Okay. Ryan, we'll start with you.
When was the driveway constructed?
Constructed?
Yeah.
The home, according to the assessor's records, the home was built in 57.
And the driveway?
The driveway, I've been driving by that house my entire life, the driveway's never been.
And it's always there? Okay. Thank you.
Ken?
Where is this property on the corner of Purdy Hill and Cutler's Farm, where the nursery is right now?
Well, it's adjacent to that nursery property. As you're going east on Purdy Hill towards 111, it's a raised ranch. It's the first house that you come to after you come through the intersection. You come through the intersection heading towards 111, and you go by the nursery property, the undeveloped portion, and the, the house, the first house you come to on the right.
Oh, they just did extensive remodeling to that. There used to be like three or four walls in front of it or something, if I remember.
That's correct. Mr. Twombly bought it several years ago and remodeled it.
Yeah, that driveway's been there for, God, no, as long as the house has been there. So, okay.
Also, Ken?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No questions? Yeah?
No, I think it's, it tends to store the houses and stuff like that.
Take your time.
Maybe you don't have something like that. Any other questions? I think it's.
You're last.
Last, and leave.
My, my question is, what does this do, this is probably for, for Will, I guess, what does it do to some of the other homes? How does this affect some of the other homes in our, in our, in our town if we go to this text amendment?
It only affects the age-restricted residents district, which, there are only three currently, and two of them are built.
And this would be the third?
Yes. Or is this the fourth? Maybe this is the fourth. The other ones are built.
Well, the other ones are built. If you include the town's development on Wheeler, this would be the fourth.
Okay. So the other ones are built. So what, for a little bit of history, these three parcels make up this property. They were combined to create the 10 acres or more parcel needed. This is the parcel that had the house on it. This house, as they said, was built in 57, like all these other houses here. So again, it only impacts this development and any future potential ARR zone that someone might come with that has a house built before 60.
And the reason why you want this is because you can't connect to?
To where the development's going to be?
Or it's too expensive to connect to where the development's going to be?
It's expensive and it's impractical. The garage for the house is on the east side of the house, which, looking at it from here, is the right side.
So the driveway is right here, is side loaded, right? Is there a garage?
Right, there is a garage.
So it's side loaded to the garage. And there is a wetland area in here as well, and some great, not terrible grade change, but there's some grade change. And the majority of the development, if you remember the plan.
It's going to be in the back there.
Was the road came in here and kind of looped like this, and the houses were around that, that looping. So this would have been sort of a longer driveway to get to the back side of the house. And it would have cut off the driveway even though the house faces, if you're going to keep the house.
Makes sense to me. No further questions?
You know, the commission all pretty much agreed that it would be a shame to tear that house down. So I think that this is a reasonable solution to that issue. Concerning Scott's comments about bringing the driveway up to current code. Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, but if any improvements were going to be done, like if they were going to redo that driveway, they would have to get a permit and then it would have to be brought up to code, right?
Not, not exactly, no. The, the code applies to new houses, and it applies to houses that have a substantial change. It has to be a substantial change to it. And I, I put it in, I thought it did comply. I didn't think it didn't. I mean, the main thing is, there's some requirements about grade and things like that, but I was really focusing more on the turnaround. And as you, and it hasn't.
It hasn't, so.
And so I, I didn't think it was an issue that it didn't comply. I mean, it's flat, so it doesn't, it's not real steep or anything, so it doesn't have the, the, the new code restrictions that were put in to the driveway code were relative to paving it if it's too steep, adding a driveway turnaround. And that's really where I was going with it. I was just trying to make sure that it was safe to get out, that they couldn't, weren't backing into the street if it was an older situation. It's the only reason why I put it in there. Other than that, it's not a big deal.
Yeah, I think that, what's the general consensus of the, of the commission about? Leave the driveway portion of it out? Shape, yes, no?
My only question is the wording and stuff. It's going to allow, it's not going to allow somebody to come in and build a brand-new driveway going out to a highway, right? Because it just says the unit, a driveway's covered under the word.
But remember, this only pertains to existing houses built before 1960 in an ARR zone.
Yeah, but does that include the driveway being built before?
Yeah, I mean, this could be wordsmithed. This could be, this could be wordsmithed to be clear of that, that the house, the driveway existed before 1960, that it is a single-family residence, and I'm assuming you probably wanted to also continue it to be as part of the DTAP single-family residence format, because I don't think you want to convert them, because this zone allows multifamily in, in buildings. And I'm not sure you'd want that necessarily.
No, we want to just address the house so we can put that wording in there, right? Just to address the single-family house.
Well, any, any changes like that would have to come back, what, for either of?
No, no, they still have to get approval from you, but then you're using that driveway. It could, they could adapt that building to be, add on to that building, and you could have four units revolving off of that driveway.
I, I think to answer your question, if you, if they were to build a, an additional driveway or a brand-new driveway elsewhere.
Yeah.
It would have to comply. If they just replaced the driveway that was there, it would just, they could just.
That's why I want to make sure that they don't go and do it, not this one, of course, but in a further unit that they decide to put in the development, and there's a house there that was, driveway's going somewhere else, and they go, oh, let's pave a driveway out this side.
Yeah, no, that would have to comply with the new code.
But, but your read is actually correct. If you read this, it doesn't say when the driveway had to be.
Exactly. That's kind of what I'm looking for.
But that's easy enough to just move some words.
Yeah, perfect.
Yeah, I think, just after unit, just the end, end driveway.
And again, nothing like.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that, and, you know, I, Scott's right. If they were going to put the driveway on the other side of the house, they've got to comply with the regulations.
All right, so we're just going to say unless the unit and driveway was constructed prior to 1960. Everybody agree with that? I, I have no other questions. Will, Scott, anything else? Okay.
Thank you.
What do you think?
Did you do any public comments?
Oh, oh, yeah. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone who'd like to speak in opposition to this application? For hostiles?
I'll be there in a moment.
Take your time.
I just have a question. Why are you limiting 1960? There's a lot of houses on that map going down Cutler's Farm Road that are much newer than 1960, and they come out onto Cutler's Farm. So why wouldn't you maybe consider going, going forward instead of 1960?
But this is, don't forget, this is related to an ARR zone.
The rest of the houses on that street are not in that zone?
Only.
This is only related to an age-restricted zone.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I didn't pick that up. But it just seemed like, you know, I mean, my houses, there's no other way to get out of my house except to back out on the drive, out on the street. And I've been there for, you know, 47 years almost, and so.
Yeah, I, I can answer that. When, when I proposed the language a number of years ago to change the driveway code, the town council did not want to burden people who had an existing arrangement. The idea was that if, if they were substantially changing it or improving it, or certainly building a new house, we had new standards that they wanted them to adhere to. But they didn't want to throw people into noncompliance by changing a code and making it more restrictive for the older house.
No, I totally agree with that, and I guess, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone with any general questions or comments? Okay. Mr. Bjorkland, back to you. Closing statements, comments?
I have nothing else to add.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Close it? Yes?
Yes.
Close. 7:24 PM. All right, next up. Planning and Zoning Commission, Monroe, Connecticut, notice of public hearing held March 1st, 2018, in accordance with Connecticut general statutes. Section eight dash seven D, a public hearing will be held in the Town Hall Council Chamber, 7 Fanhill Road, Monroe, Connecticut, on Thursday, March 1st, 2018, at 7:00 PM or soon thereafter concerning the following. RAA 2018 dash oh two, file number nine nine seven E, add use in an I-2 district. Proposed zoning text amendment to section four point three point six to add landscaper or arborist as a new principal special exception permit use within an industrial District Two, I-2, including related new definitions in section two point two point one, off-street parking standards in section six point one point two, and corresponding supplemental use standards in section eight point two point three as a new subsection N, landscaper or arborist. Petitioners, JNS Industries LLC. Will, what do you have for exhibits?
Exhibit one, regulation amendment petition narrative. Exhibit two, notice to EPA, watershed notice. Exhibit three, watershed notice to Aquarian Water Company. Exhibit four, town engineer comments. Exhibit five, chief of police comments. Exhibit six, building official comments. Number seven, certified MLC green card in Aquarian News record. Exhibit eight, fire marshal comments. Exhibit nine, commission copies of petition. Exhibit 10, regional planning referral notices to MetroCog and WestCog. Exhibit 11, response from WestCog. That's all.
Good. For the applicant.
Attorney Dominic Thomas, Conan Thomas, 315 Main Street, Derby, Connecticut, representing the applicant. It is my understanding that the public hearing needs to be kept open for the response from, I'm not sure what the other.
MetroCog.
MetroCog.
Or passage of 30 days until the first. Or the passage of 30 days.
30, whichever. Yes. This proposed regulation has gone through several iterations, conversations, and changes to text between Mr. Gresta and myself, also went to the subcommittee, I believe, twice. The purpose of the regulation specifically as to my client, who has a building at 17 Enterprise Drive, a large building, and he has his own business in there, which is Jump Tree Service, which is an illegal business in the I, the I-2 zone. So trying to address the issues and trying to correct the situation for him, the only alternative would be to include landscaper, arborist in the, in the zone. In your zoning regulations, landscapers, I believe, are allowed in the B-zone. And what I noticed in looking at it is your B-zones, which follow along, mainly follow along your major arterial areas, do tend to butt in many areas, in many instances, in your residential districts. Landscapers and arborists, and not all of them, again, I don't mean to stereotype all of them, but some of them have a tendency to locate by a house with a big yard and locate their equipment in the back. And in many other towns, what we call business condos or business are very popular, where people can, are able to get into industrial buildings, whether they are newer ones or older ones, be able to operate out of there, have their office out of there, store their equipment in there, and use some, some, a moderate amount of outside storage. So after several discussions and after several editing, going back and forth, I believe what came out of it was a very good regulation, defining arborist and landscaper appropriately. I will note something, and, which is interesting, Will and I went back and forth a little on the parking. And I was handed tonight the response from WestCog, and the only comment from the WestCog staff is that the parking requirement, based on the size of the office building, may be too onerous, as not many visitors would be expected at an arborist or landscaper's office. The requirement for one space per field employee peak shift or three spaces per facility vehicle, whichever is greater, is likely. The regulation that we have, actually, as a, as a result of the discussion, initially it was based on gross floor area, but we limited it because there really aren't a lot of people that come. I mean, I'm hoping, I hate to say this for my client, I'm hoping he won't be busy on Sunday or Saturday after the storm in Northeastern on Friday night. Trees have a tendency to fall when winds of 50, 60 miles an hour, and it increases his business. But even with that, there's really no, no issue with parking. But we limited it to four spaces per 1,000 square feet of office gross floor area. Now, most of these people have a relatively small office. You know, they're operating out of that. So that's why we did that. But I, I'm going to state that I do tend to agree, even though I have friends in the asphalt industry, I do tend to agree with, with the fact that even lesser parking would probably be sufficient. With respect to the standards that we added, this is a situation, obviously, what we've added is the business and administrative offices must be located at the same location, no outdoor display of, or sale of products or merchandise. In other words, this isn't intended for someone to set up in the industrial area and starting to sell mulch retail or anything of that nature. Motor vehicles should be registered, state of Connecticut, no, no operal, or, in other words, when their equipment is broken, you can't have a junkyard, is basically that. All equipment should be stored in a fully enclosed building within designated accessory outdoor storage area. And this fits my client. It is, it may be onerous on some other landscaping business that have a substantial amount of equipment, but I do think the intent was that they do not want in the industrial area this, this equipment in the outside as much as possible, at least not in designated shielded areas. Certainly no service or maintenance of the equipment except for minor stuff replacing. And no fuel dispensing on the premises. So this is not intended to be a situation where they have those portable fuel tanks where they can load up, they would have to go to the gas stations. Adequate off-street parking is approved by the commission, shall be provided for all onsite motor vehicles and trailers parked or stored in connection with the business operations, which is in addition to the regular parking. Vegetation within a required landscape buffer, as required by the regulations, shall consist to permanent landscaping, not material stored in containers. And access driveway should be laid out and managed to connect with the budding streets located and designated with unsafe conditions. Again, this is, even though I'm representing a client with a specific site, you have to keep in mind, this is a permitted use in four point three point six as a special exception. So what you're doing is you're addressing the issue of allowing the use in the zone, the next step for my client, specifically to be site-specific, we'd be coming back before the commission with a special exception application. And again, I, I think, not just for my client, on the more generic, because I think this type of business belongs a bit more in your IA, especially if you look at your zoning map, and you're looking where the I, I'm sorry, the I-2 zone is, IA is what they use in a different town, the I-2 zone is. If you look at it, I think it's more suitable than having these businesses locate in the B-zones, which are longer. I'm ready to answer any questions back.
Ryan?
I did not answer that. No?
Scott and Will, I was just wondering what your stance was on the response from WestCog regarding the parking? Yeah, I think it's short-sighted. What they're, you know, and obviously with landscapers, it could be different depending, like any business. You know, some businesses, there's one person that runs the office, some businesses have more of a business office. It depends on the scale of their, of their business and the type of business they do. So all we're accommodating for is the people that would, could be potentially onsite all day long. The other requirement is for the ones who are coming to the site in the morning, going out in the field, and then coming back in the afternoon. These do tend to have, like, their small office, so it's not really going to generate a big number of spaces, it's going to be one or two. I mean, they could have a 500-square-foot office. But if they are bigger, and they have a bigger processing for sales and for their, you know, accounting and all that, you know, they're going to be there, and they're going to need parking space.
No other questions?
This is for an arborist, correct?
Arborist or a landscaper.
Who's currently there now, an arborist?
He's an arborist. He doesn't do landscaping, he's a tree, a tree person, so it would be under the arborist person.
And he, he obviously is not storing any of his wood there, correct? Where he's currently at? They generally cut down a tree and then they.
He has, again, I can't tell you exactly right now. In the past, I know, and he's had the issue, because he's operating his business out of here, so this is a post-business application.
The applicant is currently under a situation of noncompliance for wanted business use.
Yeah.
And.
Yeah.
And, and I don't know about today, but he, he definitely has and does store, um, wood within his, um, dumpster containers, which are at the site now. Um, whether there's wood in him right now, I don't know, but.
Yeah, he, he'd have to comply, of course, with the twenty percent rule with regard to storage, but in the past, when he, when he comes back from a site, a job with, with the dumpster, there's the wood inside of it. There isn't, like, wood stored outside.
He's not stacking.
Not, no, no, no.
Splitting wood there and.
No, 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 no.
And we do have in that district a use that he could avail himself if he wanted to do that, called wood fire, firewood processing, so that is a permitted use that we put into the code a couple of years ago. Um, so if that is an activity he's interested in, there is a path for him to get, to get a pool for that.
But he's, that, that wasn't the intent of this, because, and that wasn't broad enough to encompass what he wanted to do, so that's why we had to do this other one.
I meant in addition to.
Yeah, in addition.
No more questions?
Okay. I haven't any questions. We, uh, we did review this a couple of times in the subcommittee, as Mr. Thomas said, so we pretty much ironed out any of our questions at that point. Um, does the staff have anything else? No? Scott?
No.
Okay. Well, Mr. Thomas, let's see if anyone in the audience has any questions or comments. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this application? Are there any general questions or comments? Okay. Mr. Thomas, back to you.
Nothing further from me.
All right, as, as Mr. Thomas stated earlier, we still have not heard back from MetroCog?
Right.
So we, uh, we can't close this hearing.
So I'll, um, let's put it for the, the next meeting, we'll carry it on the calendar. Um, I'll monitor, trying to get a response from them sooner, and I'll monitor the time, and we'll go from there, but at least we have a date certain for.
Well, our next meeting, don't forget, is in three weeks, not two.
That's right.
Okay. The twenty-second.
Um, I'm gonna have to ask, I have a, uh, public hearing in, on the, uh, Giant Wetlands project in Shelton, the big hundred and twenty-one acre piece that everybody has saved our Shelton sites.
Sure the people from Shelton would appreciate it if you came here.
Yeah, they would, they would, they would.
They'd much rather you.
They would prefer that I come here.
Well, in the alternative, if you want us to move into the April meeting and.
Uh, as long as it's the first week in April, they, uh, that is, you're a Thursday night meeting, so that, just to remind you, that is probably Thursday. No, it isn't, that's the week before, right? So, yeah, no, the first Thursday in April is fine with me.
Right, and that's, um, April fifth, that should be thirty-five days from today, so we're, we can get there on our own, so.
Yeah, and I would, if it was necessary, I guess we could do an extension.
And by then, thirty days go by and whether they respond or not.
All right, so we'll continue this till April fifth.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Seven thirty-nine PM. Um, next up, site plan developments, we have none. Deliverations and determinations. First up is, uh, number nine, extensions. Thirteen dash one dash SEP, file number one five one eight A, five seventy-nine Main Street, request a ninety-day extension. And that is. McDonald's.
The first seat you can actually do together.
Yeah, and also thirteen dash two dash ZCA, file number nine nine three D, five seventy-nine Main Street, request a ninety-day extension. Uh, we have a letter from Christopher Russo. This shall serve as a request on behalf of Real Time Investments LLC and McDonald's Corporation for an additional extension of ninety days to record the special permit and zone boundary change approval, approved by the Mineral Planning and Zoning Commission, originally dated August twenty-ninth, two thousand thirteen, and it lists a number of extensions. Their current approval, um, expires March twenty-seventh, and this extension will bring them through June twenty-fourth, two thousand eighteen. So if there are no questions, the chair will entertain a motion.
Make a motion, give him the ninety days. You can read her off.
All right, so we have a motion from, uh, alternate commissioner, Wilk, to grant the ninety-day extension. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, any further discussion? Call the roll, starting move. Ryan?
Uh, aye, approved.
Aye. Ambrose, yes.
Porter, yes.
Mayne, yes.
Okay. Next up, SEP two thousand fourteen dash thirteen dash eight-two, file number one five four nine A, four sixty-four Main Street, requesting a sixty-day extension. Um, this is crossroads. Yeah, I'm looking for the right letter. Uh, this is. Dear Commission, in regard to application SEP two thousand fourteen dash thirteen dash eight-two, file number one five four nine A, on behalf of JV four sixty-four Main Street LLC, the applicant hereby requests a sixty-day extension to meet the conditions set forth in the review of approval document associated with the permit amendment approval modification application SEP two thousand fourteen dash thirteen dash eight-two. We are requesting additional time to address staff and health department comments. Please let us know if you have any questions, we appreciate your consideration in this matter. So, uh, Will informed me that they're still, the health department is still doing some monitoring and testing of the septic fluids, so until that is completed, the applicant can't, can't complete the process, so that's why they're requesting a sixty-day extension. So do we have a motion?
How much is it?
To approve?
To approve?
Ninety-day extension.
Sixty.
Sixty days.
Sixty-day extension.
For, four sixty-four Main Street. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion? Call the roll.
Condon, yes.
Wilk, yes. Ambrose, yes.
Porter, yes.
Mayne, yes.
And, next up, SEP two thousand seventeen dash oh one, file number one five eight four A, seventy-one Web Circle, request for sixty-day time extension. Um, this is a letter from Mr. Bjorkland. Please be advised that on behalf of our client, we are requesting a sixty-day extension in order to address the above referenced approval that expires March seventeenth, two thousand eighteen. Um, what's going on with this one?
This is the, uh, up by the discovery zone, um, we had the plans, they have their ROA comments a couple of days ago. They took a while to give us the plans, we didn't get them not too long ago.
Is Dave's probably left?
We didn't get them till, till, like, a week or two ago. They gave the comments back, so they're just, so.
Okay.
It's sort of a tap rock.
All right, this is the, up at the discovery zone. So, do we have a motion?
I make, I make the motion, give him a sixty-day extension.
For what?
For the seventy-one Web Circle.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion? Call the roll.
Condon, yes.
Wilk, yes. Ambrose, yes.
Porter, yes.
Mayne, yes.
Okay, that wraps up that section. Um, that does it. Who you got? What do we wanna do with these testing amendments? Do we have to wait on these? Well, you want to do met transfer?
What?
Oh, we're in, oh, okay. Pending, okay, I'm going out of order, sorry. Bond releases reductions, we have non-permit amendment modifications, we have none. Meeting minutes, February first. Yeah, make a motion.
Make a motion, approve the meeting minutes for February first, two thousand eighteen.
Okay, we have a second.
Second.
All right, any discussion? There's one thing that I picked up and I didn't circle it. Under Chairman's reports, the last line says Porter expressed, should be his optimism, not his optimism. Okay.
Yes, he is.
Don't wanna be picky. Anything else?
That dance goes.
Yes.
Call the roll.
Yes, to approve minutes, common.
Wilk, yes. Ambrose, yes.
Porter, yes.
Mayne, yes.
All right, pending application deliverations and determinations. Select items from this agenda, this is what I skipped ahead to.
So the only one you have is the, that you could work on is the RAA two eighteen oh one.
We don't have to wait for an approval, what are doing?
Uh, no, no.
All right. We're gonna be, I'd like to delivery on the RAA two thousand eighteen dash oh one, file number nine nine six E, access driveways. This was a simple text amendment adding one little sentence about allowing houses with driveways prior to nineteen sixty to access onto a, a time road. So, start off with a motion.
Uh, motion to approve RAA dash two zero one eight dash oh one, file number nine nine six E, access driveways.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Do you want to discuss the changes? Yeah, we wanted to make it. So we made a change that it's unless the unit and the driveway were constructed prior to nineteen sixty, and the applicant agreed with that. Um, if I'm thirsty, you don't need to.
Do you like the driveway?
The end of the single-family residence.
Constructed nineteen sixty.
We really didn't, uh. I mean, if, if they were gonna change anything, it would, they'd have to come back, right?
Well, they gotta come back anyway for this, yes.
They have to come back for what? They have to come back with an SEP for this?
Well, they have to amend the SEP to incorporate that house, just to think the food plant never demolished.
Okay, that's right, and they had sixty days or something.
So, the question here that was, is that it, they were, their criteria that they were posing is that the unit and driveway existed prior to nineteen sixty and that it was, that it was a single-family home. The comment I raised was whether you wanted to keep it to be a single-family, a detached single, as opposed to them modifying it, you know, using that, not these guys, but someone else using it and saying it's multifamily.
I'm, I'm in agreement with keep it the way, put some kind of language in there that.
What do you think, Ken, about keeping the single-family aspect?
Yeah, they, 'cause they did a lot of remodeling to that place. I remember watching them, they gutted that place out. Why tear it down?
Ryan?
Yeah, keep it, keep it single-family.
All right, so keep the single-family residence laws in there.
Is it, is it single-family? Okay. Well, that's the unit driveway and driveway of the nine six. If I could spell.
Okay.
That works for me.
No individual unit driveway shall intersect directly with public highway unless the unit and driveway were constructed prior to nineteen sixty and the unit is and remains a detached, single-family residence. Sounds good.
Sounds good to me.
Everybody agree?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
No, sir.
Condon, yes.
Wilk, yes. Ambrose, yes.
Porter, yes.
Mayne, yes.
Oh, can, I need a, an effective date. You could amend, just amend that motion to include an effective date. Just to say.
First.
March first, the notice will go in on the eighth, so the earliest would be effective March twelfth. So you could amend, just.
Who made the motion? Uh, Ken?
Bruno made it. No, Bruno.
All right, just amend your motion to.
Uh.
You're making a motion to include an effective date of March twelfth.
I amend my motion to include the date of March twelfth. Effective date, March twelfth.
Aren't you glad you moved over to this side?
I know, Will. You asked me to move over here.
All right.
I didn't have to yell. It's not easier.
Excuse me.
Do you have to vote on the amendment?
Do we have to revote?
Yeah.
Second.
Condon, yes.
Wilk, yes. Ambrose, yes.
Porter, yes.
Mayne, yes.
Excuse me. You all right, buddy? I hope so. We're on vacation.
No, 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 no.
Item number fourteen, regulation review amendment work session. We had a meeting last week, week before, we were working on the payment in lieu of land donation. I think we're pretty far along with that. I thought you were bringing something up. Oh, okay. And we also have fine-tuned and finished up the previous text amendment application that we had filed and then withdrew in December. Right now, it is with the first selectman and a town use attorney for legal review before we proceed further with that, but that should be coming along hopefully relatively We don't have another meeting scheduled yet.
Yeah, we do.
Do we?
We have one scheduled for the fourteenth because.
Oh, that's.
Remember someone's coming to.
The fourteenth at five-thirty.
Yep.
I do have that in my calendar. So our next zoning subcommittee meeting is the fourteenth, Wednesday night at five-thirty. I have no correspondence. Chairman's report, I have nothing new. Any commissioners have anything?
Yeah, this, um, what we just voted on this driveway with this Hossam Pretty Hill, what exactly is going in there? 'Cause I wasn't involved in it.
Ten unit?
Ten units.
Yeah.
No, it's, uh, it will be sixteen with this house.
What is it, like, adult community or like?
It's age restricted, so it's fifty-five and older.
Oh, okay.
Um, they're individual detached homes, um, somewhat of a different, each a little bit different style. Um, they're all around a loop road, somewhere around the outside, somewhere on the inside, and there's a lot of landscaping on, well, there's a lot of landscaping on the outside. Um, it's a self-contained community, it's gonna be a condominium ownership, and we under HLA, Home Association.
Fit someplace I can move to when my wife retires, huh? Move around the corner.
Hey, you don't have to wait for her to retire. You just have to be over what?
Fifty-five?
Yeah, there's one you have to leave it to them.
Well, I am, I'm sixty-five, so I guess I.
There's one you have, as long as you have no kids. Number nineteen.
Land use, staff.
I didn't.
I have, um, Will sent out a, uh, an email to everybody about some potential, uh, training opportunities, and I don't know if everyone has responded or not. If you have not, please respond to Will. Um, you know, the, we, we all should take advantage of any training opportunities. You know, we, we all should take advantage of any training opportunities that come before us, because it just helps us to do this job better, the more, more knowledge we have about land use regulations and processes. So if you haven't responded to Will yet, please do.
I did.
You did. And there...
I didn't say you didn't.
I understand. I didn't say that.
I said some people didn't.
I was just looking at Will this week. I did. I have not. Okay, well, I did.
And, and so the commission, you also have some budget money, if there ever was any kind of, you know, mission to you, to some of the training sessions that the different organizations do offer, sometimes there is a cost, the commission does have money to pay for.
We don't have a date on what you...
No, they're just looking for interest, and then they're gonna coordinate and figure that out.
Yeah, so that's why it's important to get back to Will, because, you know, until, until we know if there's an interest, you're not gonna schedule something and pay to have people come and present if there's no one to show up to take advantage of it.
Will will see you here.
I, no, it's, this is something that, that they would coordinate, this particular opportunity is something that would be done through UConn, but it would be coordinated through MetrocoG, which has their offices down in Bridgeport. And they were looking for regional interest, so depending on that interest feedback that they get back, they'll decide what is the appropriate location, based on size and the location within the MetrocoG region that people were interested. So if no one from, you know, the north end is gonna be interested, they're probably gonna have it down in Bridgeport, or whatever.
I'll give you my answer now, I'm interested in it.
We have to find a ride for Ryan.
Let's find the program.
I could Uber.
Yeah, you can Uber it.
He could Uber, that guy did in West Virginia, took him home to New Jersey.
And again, this is one potential opportunity, there are others throughout, which we will let you know as they come along. And we've occasionally done training in-house with staff.
Okay, does anybody have anything else? Staff? Motion to adjourn?